Feltus.
Yes.
Worzni.
Yes.
Fetch.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Ethan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Verification of postings.
The agenda was posted at City Hall State Department of Arcadia, the city's client of the city website on Monday the fourteenth of January.
So we got a thirteen item agenda, Google agenda, so.
Seven.
Roll call.
Worzni.
Yes.
Fetch.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Public climate. Public climate.
I'm just here to listen what's going on with this recycling referendum. I have no idea what you guys are pursuing and that's what I'm here to listen to. And so at this time, I don't really have to comment until I know what's going on.
Presentations, we have none. Full business. Google minutes on January second. All those in favors? Roll call actually.
Okay, I'm set.
I abstain.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Worzni.
Is there questions on the minutes? Which should have been done first?
What's this B?
Do you have questions on the second?
No, I've got a question on the minutes.
For the second or for the third?
This is January second. In the minutes last month, a motion was made by Feltus, second by Meuzak, in the amount of thirty-six thousand oh forty-one eighteen. And then where did I see it was thirty-three thousand. Which, I was just curious as to which one was right. Yes, to the school.
Thirty-six thousand is in the minutes and the thirty-three thousand is the second request for payment. Is that what you're seeing there Bob?
Yeah.
Pardon?
So if you look at your agenda.
Yeah, one said that's where it is.
Yeah.
Approval of the school district pay request thirty-three, but then on the minutes it was thirty-six.
Sorry, just wondering which one was right. Thirty-six is the first page request. Thirty-three is the second.
Oh, I understand. Now I understand. Thank you. So this is second request.
Yeah, there's a.
Okay, I got it now. Okay, it didn't take you that long. Okay, got it.
Under whole business consideration of the many minutes, am I over first? Probably think of that.
The, what about the, under whole business, the, what you're bringing, do they have consideration of many minutes?
That's where I'm at.
Okay, it came, it was brought to my attention. A few weeks ago, I had a call from the ambulance service. When we approved their budget, there, apparently there was some talk at the ambulance meeting about reducing the capita. And they chose not to do that. When I had done the summary of the meeting, I was under the impression like per capita was going down from nineteen thirty to nineteen dollars. That is not the case. So we're asking for consideration to just approve their ambulance board budget at fifty-nine to ninety and take off the per capita decreasing because it is, it is, I believe, staying the same. It's not decreasing.
So if it stays at nineteen thirty instead of nineteen.
It does not, it does not change the budget amount. We cannot correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I will approve that then.
Second.
Roll call.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Worzni.
Yeah.
Fetch.
Yes.
Discussion on dogs in Memorial Park walking path.
So this was an item that was requested to be added to the agenda previously. I did do some research into particularly animal and dog feces on the walking path. And we have a citywide animal feces ordinance in our animals, the animal chapter of our city code. And that allows the city to ticket and to ticket people or owners that have or are guilty of not picking up the fecal matter. So that applies citywide.
Okay.
In regards to Memorial Park and Soldiers Walk. There is no wording in our ordinance that restricts dogs in Memorial Park. Although I did find that there is a restrictive covenant on Soldiers' Walk that does not allow domestic animals or ducks waterfowl on Memorial, on Soldier's Walk. So remember, we do have a sign out there that there's no dogs allowed. But there is no way for us, for the city to issue a citation for that if it did happen. So what I would recommend is adding that to our Memorial Park ordinance. So that members of the public can see that in ordinance. In addition to the signs that are currently out there. I have spoken to the mayor and spoken with Chief Diana Anderson in regards to adding signs out there. Warning about picking up animal feces. So that they know that that is a violation of ordinance.
Isn't it common courtesy that if you walk a dog in a stool, you pick it up? Who are the, is it, I don't walk up in the park. Is there a lot of them that?
There is, yeah. I've walked, I've walked up there lately, but there seems to be not a real lot. But I think it's, like you say, it's a common courtesy, but I don't think it wouldn't hurt to have some signage up there. The second thing I would like to see is some of these bag stations so that you can pick up a bag. Because a lot of people, they go out of the house and they're hurrying the dog because the dog wants to go and, because they want to walk and all this other thing. And the next thing you know, if you get out to the park, whoops, I didn't bring a bag along. So there are these stations where you can have a bag at the station. And so that reminds people to, hey, please pick up the fecal matter and take it, take it with you. So if you bring it, you take it with you. So I think that's the idea of that. So if we want to do that, I would propose that we should do something on that order, but I don't know. I have to bring that up because I'm motion, but.
For the next one's agenda.
Right. And talk about.
And, and so if. Costs. So this is a discussion and in regards to, you know, we'll take, we'll take action to add up, you know, signage. Please do go ahead and do that in regards to ordinance and violation and penalty. In regards to adding language to the park ordinance. Having Soldier's Walk, we can bring a draft to the next meeting and we can, we can have that discussed with Todd in regards to.
At that time? Okay, but they, we want to come up with costs and how many signs or how many stations we would need and where they're located and all this sort of stuff.
Well, I would think a good place would be at the beginning or on Fairfield where they go into the park or in the park itself where they, the connector to the park is. Because I've got a couple, two hundred bags from the newspapers that I could bring down. Do you have requests for bags down? Because I've got bags. I'm saving them.
Well, just a bag from the grocery store works really well.
Yeah, but these are the nice little ones from the newspaper. So, you know, you fold it once or twice and.
Yeah. You got your. Well, they're like, you put them on your hand just like.
Right, you fold it over.
And then you pull, pull over. Because like when they use to palpate cows, you know, that's, that's the same type of thing.
So I'll keep saving them then until we find out what we're going to do.
So we'll add that to the next one's agenda then?
Yep.
That'd do well. Yeah.
Boarding commission updates. Don't have any. As I see. Department updates, none. Public hearing, none. Eight, eight eight. Possible action on database IT specialist.
So as you may remember, we had come to council to get approval to advertise this position. We did so in November and we had one applicant submit. You know, we found out that the salary range for which we were looking to hire at was low for an IT person, an admin person. And therefore we are asking to increase that salary amount up to fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. As you may remember, it was forty-eight thousand previously. This has gone also to the utility commission since that position is a split pay position. And the utility commission has approved that amount.
Was the lady that, or gentleman, or the person that was hired, and accept, did they accept the job, but then they found out they wanted more money? What were, what was, did they give you a request for more money or what was the amount?
Yeah, that, well, we offered, we offered at the forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
And they requested for more than that.
Okay. And there was only one, correct?
So we didn't hire.
We did not hire, no.
Has there been any new applicants since then?
Uh, no, because the application period is closed.
Okay, so we're still waiting.
So what we would do is if the council doesn't approve it, we would re-advertise the position. There are some changes that we would make in the posting and where we post it to, to draw in a larger group, hopefully draw, you know, get it before more eyes.
Would that be then, Marv is not affiliated with the city of Arcadia anymore if we hire somebody else?
Well, that, we're going to talk about his contract next, but officially Marv or BCC Now's agreement expired at the last year.
So if the new guy comes in, we would not need Marv because they're shortcut. Okay, that's what I'm after. Thank you.
So right now, Marv is just there.
Till we get somebody.
Till we get somebody, right?
Correct. And again, we'll have, you know, we're going to talk about his, that computer services contract next. And I had that discussion with Marv and with Carla while extending services until we are able to find someone.
Do you have to print that so many times or when would you start printing if this table agrees with it tonight?
Well, we would, we would, we would try to advertise right away.
Okay.
So then we need a motion to approve the new wage of fifty-eight thousand?
Up to.
Up to. Up to.
Oh, up to.
Our motion.
Second. Roll call.
Worzni.
Yes.
Fetch.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
All right, discussion possible approval, two thousand nineteen computer service agreement.
So you'll see as part of your packet, an extended contract or a new contract agreement with BCC Now LLC, which is Marv. Currently provides IT services for the city. He had previously provided services at two thousand eight hundred dollars a month. He is asking that that go up to three thousand dollars a month. Also in the contract, a change would be for a three-month term instead of a year-long term. As we expect, that would be the time that we need to get a new person in and then get them going in our system. And that does provide us the option to go month-to-month thereafter. So if we're caught in a situation where we had not, where we can't find a person, we would be, well, we're extended monthly.
Well, hearing that, that three thousand dollars a month, we can go month-to-month, we're going to be looking for someone else, I would make a motion that we do the three-month deal.
And then month-to-month thereafter?
Just approve the twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Because then it gives the option.
Okay, okay, I will, the two thousand nineteen computer services agreement then.
Seconded by Marvless. Motion by Bob, seconded by Marvless. Roll call please.
Fetch.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Worzni.
Discussion possible approval of two thousand nineteen, twenty building inspection service.
Well, you have, you know, as part of your packet, the services contract for building inspections, the frame inspections, Bud Rayver in particular. He has been the city's building inspector for some time. So we're requesting that all services be carried into twenty nineteen and twenty twenty with the current fee schedule. And that fee schedule is listed in your, in your document, I believe it's six hundred fifty dollars for inspection of a new home. Eight hundred dollars for inspection of a new duplex building. And then two hundred dollars per inspection, whether it's a remodel, whether it's a addition or garage or demolition. And that's, that, that fee has been consistent. You know, before drafting the new agreement, we did take a look at potentially the cost of services if Traplo County, if we went to Traplo County for building inspection services. And what they do there is they charge per square footage. I guess there's not necessarily idle favor one way or the other whether we go to the county for services or not. One, one big difference is that the Department of Safety and Professional Services have switched to a a reporting, monthly reporting system for new single and two-family residential. And currently for Bud Rayver, I do that reporting for him. So he fills out the billing permit and I provide that reporting to the Department of Safety and Professional Services. Whereas the county, they would, they would take care of doing all of that.
Is he accessible and does he respond when you, when asked?
There's been mixed, mixed results. You know, sometimes he is hard to get a hold of. I've heard that, you know, after five o'clock, he doesn't respond to calls. I don't know how different that is with the county inspector. I would imagine that the county inspector would have, have regular business hours.
And it, is it for two thousand nineteen or is it for two-year contract?
It'll be a two-year contract.
Two-year.
Would it be? Would it be helpful to you to not have to do that paperwork?
Well, we don't, in a situation where we would have a lot of single or new construction, it would be helpful not be, not have to do that. But we currently don't have a lot of new construction. I believe this past year, we had two new constructions, well, three new constructions. Which it doesn't take too much time to do. It doesn't, I mean, I'm here full-time. It doesn't bother me to report that monthly in the month that we have new construction.
Question. Does a building inspector, this is just new, new homes? Is that not what they're inspecting? Or are we inspecting homes that are already in existence and then what's around?
Well, the building, the building inspector is responsible for inspecting any new builds, any additions, any kind of construction per our building code. So if they're required to come in to get a building permit, that building inspector will go out and do it. So if you put it, if you put it in there, it would be inspections for violations. If we suspect, if the city suspects the violation of the, of the building code, it would be within the power of the building inspector to put a sign to it.
So it's not existing buildings or residences or buildings and what the property looks like, that type of answer?
Well, his job, yeah, his job wouldn't be necessarily property maintenance. So we have a, we have a property maintenance ordinance and then we have a building code, building construction ordinance.
Okay.
So his job is more related to building construction. It's not necessarily property maintenance.
Would he even be involved in if we wanted to raise a property?
He would be involved.
Okay. Because you said, here's one statement, I'm going to clear this in my own mind. You said after five o'clock he doesn't answer. Would he respond to you the next day then? Hopefully?
He would, he responds to me.
Okay, right, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, sure, okay.
I can't, I can't, I mean, I can't say in regards to, you know, homeowners or builders contacting him. And I don't track that information unless they report it directly to me. But every issues that, every issue that has come to me as the coordinator of that office and by me contacting Bud, he's responsive.
Because I know when we built in ten, he was the building inspector and he showed up.
I still move to approve this motion. Do you want a second there, Mike?
How second we got to have him?
Now we can discuss it.
Roll call please.
Holston.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yeah.
Worzni.
Yes.
Fetch.
Yes.
Discuss possible, possible action to adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash one, resolution for levy limit referendum curbside recycling.
So this was something that was requested of the council at the previous meeting. Just a little bit of background on the recycling program here in Arcadia. We used to contract with Arcadia Recycling, which was owned by and operated by Bob Sentala. At that point, our agreement with Arcadia Recycling was for at least fourteen thousand dollars annually, twelve thousand dollars annually, excuse me. And since that time, Arcadia Recycling has the chance over to Hilltopper Recycling. With that, the standard of service that we received from Arcadia Recycling, which included drop-off and curbside pickup, albeit you had to organize your curbside. When it switched over to Hilltopper, that, for that same level of service, the cost of that service increased. I believe it was twenty-five thousand dollars what Hilltopper acquired us. And so to get that price to reduce, what the council had done at that point was drop the curbside recycling and allow for private residences to pay for curbside if they had want, if they wanted to do so. But then they kept the recycling contract, the cost of the recycling contract with similar numbers. So I believe it went from twelve thousand dollars a year to fourteen thousand dollars a year. And that fourteen thousand dollars a year is what we pay currently. And that's purely a drop-off service. So there was, there had been some talk among council, some members of the public about single sore curbside recycling. And what that is, is you get a cart, you throw everything in one cart and then whoever the vendor would be, would pick it up. And to do so, would obviously increase the impact to the city in the general fund. And so, and to get effective rates on recycling, it would have to be pretty much citywide. And so in researching the issue, because we've never charged for recycling before, if the city added a fee to recycling, we would have to reduce our general levy by that same amount. And so what the referendum here is doing is asking the residents to allow the city to add a recycling user fee without reducing the general tax value.
Question, Chuck, you have something else? You said a user fee, if you don't use it or you build. You're still built.
You're still built.
And this container you're talking about, is that, I heard some talk of the garbage and everything gets put in there and.
It would only be for recycling. The city would keep its current trash services, waste management services, unless in the future the council decides to go in that direction.
Well, the reason I bring that up, I was on the city council when we started the bags. And it was a hot issue. I mean, there was a lot of people that were ready to kill us.
Yeah.
A bunch of people threw their garbage in their ditches all over the country, but it did settle down. And it's very fair the way it is right now. The bag thing, it's a user fee. Now, some people, I go up the street, eight, ten bags out there. If they want to pay for that, well, you know, they end recycling. That's their problem, not mine. I shouldn't have to pay for them. Now, I do understand it. I don't want to sound racial, but the apartments up there on top of the hill, I guess they don't do much recycling. Someplace along the line, I did talk to a couple aldermen. I told them my viewpoint on it. I said back, how many years ago when they started this soccer thing? They hired a guy, the city hired him, Louis or something like that. He was really, I heard good comments on him, that he wouldn't talk to the people that couldn't understand English, explain it to them. And I think something like that would, would help. They would, it's not a big deal to go and recycle the stuff, drop it off. They're really busy up there on Saturdays. I do recycle. I've always done that since the beginning. I also heard some comments there. I'll bring that up, that with the recycling and stuff where they have that big roll-off container there for the town residents to drop their garbage. And everybody and their brother is bringing it in there. There is a way to correct that. That's not the city's problem. That's a town problem. And I told Bob about it and I think I talked to Joe, something like you go to a state park, you get a sticker. Now, there you pay twenty-some dollars, but the town of Arcadia should be able to get these little stickers. A sticker like that, not a card that you can transfer to every, every vehicle there is that you know. Put it on your windshield. It's good for somebody yours who have a date on it. And they come through and the guys that recycling thing that are supposed to be patrolling that and watching it. All they don't have to go up and ask questions and get in trouble and get people saying you got a bad attitude. Because the last guy we had up there, Bob, he, he wasn't too well-liked by a lot of people. Because he'd get on about the recycling, wasn't clean enough. I, I know some people that firmly believed in recycling, but they quit recycling because of Bob. Now, these new guys, I've had good experiences with them. I think they're good. But anyway, that would take care of that town putting sticker on your windshield to prove that you, that you're allowed to drop your garbage off in there. That gets the pressure off the town, the animosity they have towards the city. And maybe hire this interpreter to go up and educate these apartment owners anyway up there or managers. And I think you can get a lot of things changed. these apartment owners anyway up there or managers, and I think you can get a lot of things changed. I, I guess, I don't know, I do believe in recycling, uh, I'm not in favor of, I'm gonna pay it for everybody, they should be able to go and recycle it themselves. You know, I, I, I have one son that stays with me part time, and I put out one of these small red garbage bags, usually about once every two weeks, and I recycle heavy. So I mean, it can be done, and it's a user fee. And that was my comments on that, and that's why I was here, and I wanted to know if it was tied in with the garbage thing.
Sure, yeah, the recycling and the garbage are separate, unless council decides that you want to go in that direction and, and go with that, but that's gonna lead to take more, more conversation. I mean, we have, not only do we, we provide the service, but you know, there's a question about all the equipment, there's a question about staffing, there's, you know, there's, there's overarching issue that we have to deal with first, uh, before just simply RFP, uh, for garbage services. Whereas recycling's, recycling has always been a, a contracted service, uh, for which the city had always paid. And part of that is through grant funding, which has been reduced over the years. And so, you know, there in itself, that's, is, is the reason why we're coming to the public to ask for the referendum. Now, I, I wanna make a comment in regards to, uh, you know, it being part of referendum and, and the user fee going out to what our residences, is because to get it an effective rate for recycling, recycling's not a big moneymaker, uh, you can ask anyone in, in the market and they'll tell you that it's not. In order to get it an effective rate, uh, that would benefit the city, you need to be able to have a large number of users. And so, if, for example, the city said, well, we're, we're only going to charge for those who want to pay for, uh, recycling services, then you may not have a recycling service.
I, I agree with what you're saying, I, I believe that, uh, since this is a referendum, this is to see what the people want, or what they feel, or how it is, uh, uh, what they would want to do. Now, this, uh, would, uh, allow for a, if this would pass, uh, the, the recycling people would put out some kind of a bin, is that correct?
Yeah, so there's a couple of options, and, and I, I wanna just say that we, we have not requested proposals for this yet. So we, uh, so this. So there's a, in the way, it would depend on the way, on the way that we write the, the proposal. There are different options, at that point, the city could lower the rates by purchasing these bins and controlling the bins, or you could have the carrier buy the bins, or the carts, whatever you wanna call them, and whatever size you want to go with, uh, and that will, will then be put into the, the piece, I'm sure.
But this is just a referendums with the people, if they, if this is a good idea. I noticed, you know, I, I put out recycling, I, uh, uh, on the curb, and I paid ten dollars a month, it's thirty dollars for three months. And I noticed it's like about four to one, uh, for recycling, uh, items to one garbage, which means that there's a lot of people perhaps out there that are throwing away, uh, recyclables into their garbage. And this would reduce our garbage, uh, problems or pick up, pick up. And it was also, uh, help with the, the environment and this type of thing with our recycling, uh, plastic bottles and all this sort of thing, so. Co-mingling, uh, putting out a bin to put everything in there is really nice, you know, so that you don't have to separate it out. Right now, I do co-mingle various items in my bags and they pick it up, so, uh, for ten dollars a month. Now, I don't know what the cost is going to be for people to recycle, um, you know, when we, this would be on a tax type of situation, everybody would have to pay for everybody, like Chuck was saying. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure there's some people that say, hey, you know, I don't wanna do that, so. By having a referendum, at least we got an idea of how the people feel about this, that's my feeling.
Well, and it, it could cost the city less money because they're gonna have less tonnage to take to La Crosse.
Can I ask? Must be the devil's advocate, is in tonnage, we have a contract with La Crosse County to supply X amount of tons to the farmers, so.
We, we, we do receive that by a large number, and we continue to grow with that exceed us. Uh, but one, one way that, that recycling will impact, uh, the waste is that if there is more recycling, the revenue that we get from trash bags may be, may reduce. So, I mean, you know, you know, it'll be all.
But can I just ask, Doc, um, you said you, how many times a month is that for the ten dollars and what day of the week is it?
Every two weeks.
Oh, every two weeks.
Every two weeks and, uh, right, it's every two weeks, yeah.
Okay, twice a month, okay.
So, the thing is, is to remember this, and it'd be the same thing with a bin, I'm sure, to remember to get it out and put it on by the curb, but you know, when we go to the cities, our kids, our children live up there and they, uh, use the bin system and it really works well, I mean, for them to recycle, uh, it's easy to do. If you have the bins out there like people in the apartment perhaps would maybe be using this more often, I don't know. If it's, hey, there's a place to put this stuff, here I will recycle, but maybe, maybe that won't work, I don't know.
Well, there are also communities that, um, if they find recyclables in their garbage, you're fine.
It's coming to that.
Chuck, you have a comment? Some, some do that, uh, I did hear a few comments about, it saves us money on the garbage. Uh, that's, like I say, is a user fee, it was set up so much bag, and used to be anyway, unless it's changed, and I talked with Dave Colby, you know, and he was, shortly after he retired off being the street commissioner. Your garbage fee, it paid for, well, whatever the bags are, actual cost of the bag, it paid for the pickup of the garbage, you had basically two guys on a garbage truck. It paid for the garbage truck and replacement of the garbage truck, paid for the fuel, it paid for hauling it to La Crosse and the fee in La Crosse, it was hundred percent, at that time, it was like, it paid for itself.
Self sufficient.
Now, if you did go as far as eliminating, that's a, it's a little scary, you go with this container, you could throw everything in it, I've heard that story, uh, I ain't saying it doesn't work, but at the same time, uh, right now, out of your city crew, are you really gonna need, say you got five guys up there right now roughly, are you gonna need five guys if you get rid of the garbage, if it comes to that? Where right now, you're, you're, you're paying their wage on garbage for a couple days, works out fine. And then they fluctuate a little bit if there's a big snowstorm, they have the extra help to clean up the streets and everything else on the days that they need the extra people, where they probably don't need five people full time, if they didn't have the garbage. That's one thing to keep in mind, that, uh, that was one of the things we looked at with the garbage, the bags. City of Arcadia was one of the first ones to do it. So, it's, it's definitely a, a user fee and it works out, works out fine. Now, I, Marla said something about, uh, they can find you, yeah, I remember that too, that was talked about. But they were looking at, uh, the percentage, the state wasn't really mad at the city, you're gonna have some, they said. Uh, the other thing is, uh, right now, when you go up to the recycling, uh, you take the number ones and twos. Now, you have a lot of them are fives, oh, that can't go in there, well, then you, you throw it in a different container and they haul it for garbage. So I mean, uh, you're gonna have people that are gonna abuse the situation, how many people are gonna throw garbage in that recyclable container? And if you put it on the referendum, I really think you should figure out what, what you should put, put into information, what it's gonna cost on your taxes, if that's where it's gonna go on your taxes, or is it gonna be on your utility bill? Uh, so you have that, and what it's gonna cost if you have to purchase that bin. These people need to know all of that information before you throw it out, because otherwise it's like, boy, if you wanna recycle, you know, people are just gonna vote and that's it, you know, they don't really understand what's going on. Information's gotta really get out there to get a correct answer.
So when this, excuse me, when this was initiated, it paid for all the things you mentioned, do you remember what year that was?
Oh, God, that was back in the mid eighties.
Okay, and Bill, do you know if it pays for all of that now?
I think we, we end up pretty even, I mean, the, we've increased garbage bags over time.
Pardon?
We've increased the price of garbage bags over time.
Right, right, okay.
Uh, and again, I mean, it's, it's, it's a numbers game with, uh, with the tonnage is. So, I mean, you have to keep in mind that, I mean, obviously, uh, the more trash we have recycling put in that, uh, you know, not only is the more time that we spend on it, but then the more impact it has on our equipment. We have, I don't believe we've done an audit recently, I think the most recent one was done in twenty twelve. But, um, at that time, it found out, it found that it was, the revenues and, uh, the expenses were pretty poor. And it, it did include all the, the items that you mentioned.
Question or comment anyways? Like Chuck says, uh, Arcadia was the, the leading.
One of the first ones, yeah.
To do the bags, uh, being the biggest, largest city in our community and, and forward thinking type of a community, I would think that this type of, uh, situation of being put to the residents and, and tell them, you know, why and what for, and I don't know, hopefully we would probably have some ideas of cost with a, a referendum being put out there so they can understand the differences of, uh, throwing it away versus recycling. But then you gotta think too, of our environment, all this, uh, these products that are going into our air, uh, that's going into the ground, that's never going to, uh, to dissolve over, over the years. Uh, the number fives, like you say Chuck, up in the cities, they take the number fives, I don't know what they do with them, but I take my number fives up to the cities and recycle them up there, but maybe down here, if there's enough fives or there's enough, um, uh, desire to get rid of the number fives in a recycling manner, that'd be, that'd be great. The other thing would be to, by doing this to reduce the number fives, or, is to talk to the manufacturers or to the companies that use the number fives, for instance, the dairy, uh, industry that uses, uh, those in the cottage cheese and this type of thing, they would probably use maybe a different, uh, container. If you go at them, uh, ask them enough, I've been told up at QuickTrip, there was some items that were, uh, that were in containers that were number fives, and then they reduce it down to number twos. But my point here is, I think we should, being the, uh, the, the community that's, uh, at the forefront of many things, because we're the largest and, uh, we got some good, uh, thoughts down here to start things, I would recommend, I don't know if we need a motion to go to referendum and allow this to, uh, when we do that, let people know the, what it's gonna cost and what you're going to get and this type of a thing. When we do so, I think the referendum should spell out all, it's just like, uh, Chuck said there. So, I mo, I move that we would, uh, adopt this resolution, uh, twenty nineteen, one resolution for the levy limit referendum. And we, uh, let's see what happens.
A second.
I, I just wanna, yeah, that there's specific language in the resolution. When, when you, when you talk about rates or you talk about, you know, carts, uh, we can definitely start the RFP process for that right now and, and require that they provide us with a response back before the referendum, but we'll, we'll have to build in some time there where we need to engage whether it's staff or whether it's a group who's interested in this, and, and interested in recycling, to provide that information to the public. I mean, in order to provide that information to the public, uh, is going to require more work than just a, a proof in the constitution.
Right, I understand that.
Right, but, you know, I think Chuck made a good point that we want people to know what they're, what they're voting on too. So the more information that could be out there before that, but, um, I can't help but think of our environment and of our mother earth.
But this still doesn't tie to dumping the garbage, mixing it all together though?
No garbage.
Okay.
Correct, just recycling.
Cause that's a bad one.
You gotta tell people what is recyclable and what is trash for some people, so like you say.
Well, I agree, you like to say somebody should tell them not to make fives anymore. I've been told by some individuals, you know, see, I've got, over the years, it's an interest in mine. Trimple County down by Galesville, or next to Washington zone, I believe it is.
Southern Trimple County.
They would take stuff like that, and it's like, how can they do it? And then it came back, comments that were made to me before, you know, cause that was, being on the city at that time, I caught a lot of grief, you know, uh, that we put Bob in there, you know, Bob could have his bad days and whatever, I got along with him, but, maybe, maybe it was just him that doesn't wanna, didn't wanna do the fives, maybe you need to talk, somebody needs to talk with your recycler now, maybe, maybe they would take that, I don't know, I, I don't take it up there.
And I think that iPhone's about recycling is a bottle and a cap are different things. Why can't they make the caps the same as the bottle? That's a problem that I have with.
Lids, lids to these containers too, they don't even have them.
Okay, put it on the, uh.
Yeah, but I think we should move forward, uh, see what the people say, get the information out.
But inform them, inform the public before it is.
Get the information out there.
We have to educate.
And a paper or something is gonna come out.
Roll call, please.
Feltus?
Yes.
Wurznie?
Yes.
Betch?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
All right, discuss possible, possible action, refer to Darlin Labs for CSM, plan to, to the planning commission.
What's the CSM?
Certified survey map request, um.
That's this one.
Yeah, you should have a map of it in your, your, yeah.
Details.
Certified survey map, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so there's a, a plot of land that is just south of what is Pravea House right now.
Is that with an I or an E? The letter says an E, you guys say I, IA or is it DA, Pravea?
Pravea, that's the I.
IA, okay, I'm telling, Cleveland's is, letter is P A.
Uh, but, so Glenn Wright, um, had submitted the application to subdivide, uh, land that is owned by Darlin, um, Labs, um, so that he may donate that piece of land to the ambulance for, for the construction of, uh, the ambulance shed. And, uh, I've been informed that the construction is to start, uh, in April. This is the current proposed layout of that ambulance shed, um, by ordinance, uh, once the application for the, the approval of the certified survey map comes to council and goes to the planning commission for review and recommendation, uh, in that process, we'll send it to the utilities, uh, for their recommendation and also we'll send it to the Department of Administration for review.
Are, are, are the entrances in the back on the side, where, and what, what's the building look like toward the road?
The building faces the road anyway?
Right.
And then there's one, one entry, one exit.
Facing the road?
No.
Where are you gonna drive in and drive out? On the side? East, north and south?
This does, this doesn't have the plan of the building. This is just the site, the dirt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we have to even discuss that.
Yeah, this is just in regards to the certified survey map.
Yeah.
We're not approving the, uh, site plan or anything like that. But to answer your question, the, the garages face the street.
I think the garage faces the Detloch Drive.
Correct.
Correct. Right. And I think there's three doors, if I'm not mistaken.
So, then you want this to go to the plan commission?
Correct.
All motion.
Second.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Marla. Roll call please.
Worsni?
Yes.
Bet?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Feltis?
Yes. Bills of general account, approval of Arcadia School District pay request number two, library in an amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
So.
A second, what the hell?
So, this is the second pay request. Just give everyone it up and update the, uh, the change order did come in for, to, to have the library as part of the construction. Uh, this did come in lower than what they had expected it to be, therefore it was tended. We're waiting for a signature from Mike Moran, who represents the Lawny Foundation, on that, that change order and then the school will sign off on that. So, that's, that's one missing piece that, that we should have by Friday. The other missing piece is the lease agreement and Terry and I continue to work on that. We've been working with, with Beckstead and their attorney on it and we're, we're pretty close. There's some difference in language that we wanna make sure that we have in there. But once we do receive that lease agreement in the final format, it is our intention to provide a presentation to the council and to the library board of that lease agreement so that everyone is understanding of that.
So, this payment is okay with Terry?
Well, the materials that they've submitted were good to go.
But it's okay with Terry then?
I don't think Terry.
He's not, that's not part of the process that you guys approved?
Oh, okay.
So, the, you wanna just review the process quick on how we.
So, yeah, so when, when the, when the pay request comes in from Myron or from a, a contractor, it goes to the school district. The school district then splits those costs in accordance to what amounts to the square footage, uh, percentage of the project. So, in bid package number one, which is the shell of the building, the, the city's contribution is responsible for, I believe, two point nine eight. I don't quote, you know, that, I don't count that.
That's right.
The number is in front of me, but two point nine eight percent of the total bills, invoices that come in. That's the city's here. Now, in bid package number two, for just the library addition cost, that, that, that percentage is larger. I think we pay about forty percent and Arcadia Education Foundation pays about sixty percent for the library. We don't pay any of the, the build outs for the community center or for the gym space that is part of the referendum school.
Will there be more pay requests?
There will be, yeah.
How many?
The number of pay requests, I don't know, because that's dependent on how many times they request. But the contribution that we have and contracted with the school district is up to four hundred and, I believe, eighty-two thousand dollars.
And that number is available or it's secured, that four hundred and eighty-two because of?
That amount?
Yeah, that amount.
Uh, that amount is made up of the payments that have already been made by the school district to, to the city on the, the repayment of the assessments for Fairfield and that bus shed paving. And then the amount to be paid yet, the city will be borrowing that amount to be paid back by the school district. So, we have, we have one hundred, well, we had one hundred and ninety-two, ninety-seven thousand dollars, of which we've already paid out thirty-six thousand dollars. And then this one will be thirty-three thousand dollars. So, in the bank, we should have about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And what we'll do is we'll work through that amount first, what's, what's in the bank first. And then thereafter, then we would be borrowing that amount to, to pay the remainder of the library plus.
So, then our, our long-range bottom line would be about a hundred and thirty roughly without getting exact of what our contribution is to the school district?
No, it's four eighty-two.
Well, he said one ninety-seven.
We're gonna have a shortfall.
Okay.
Um, the one thirty, we are, we have cash in the bank repayment from the Fairfield advances of a hundred and ninety-seven.
Okay, that's what we, okay, that's what we have.
But then we, out of that one ninety-seven came the first pay request that was approved of thirty-six thousand. Since this next one, if, you know, it was, you know, once it's voted on and it's approved, that will come out of that Fairfield balance. When that is down to zero, we're looking at how we're financing that. We've been in contact with the state bank. You know, we wanna set it up so that when we borrow money, you know, when the, when the school district makes their next payment to the city in October, that we're paying, we're paying right back on that loan to the state bank. So, we're, we're trying to minimize our interest costs and minimize how much we have to borrow. But there will be a shortfall from the one ninety-seven to the four eighty-two, you know, that we'll get back over time when the school district repays their assessments, but we don't have in the bank today.
What will roughly the, the October check be?
It's like forty-seven, eight ninety-two.
Forty-seven thousand?
Yeah, and that's a fixed amount over ten years, non-interest-bearing is what the agreement had been.
And where in the fourth year have I paid it?
Yeah, we've had three payments.
You need a motion on this? I, I would move to approve the pay request.
We have a motion in the second to approve the pay request. It was made by you Todd and seconded by Joe. We just need a vote.
There you go.
Roll call please.
Bet?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Feltis?
Yes.
Worsni?
Yes. Approved Bills of General Account in an amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-one cents.
Questions?
Yes.
So, what does orchid pest control, what, what sort of pests do we, are we seeing besides?
Mice?
Mice, rats, bugs, everything. Where in the city hall or where?
Yeah, city hall.
They, they have one there since they're no code.
Oh, oh, they moved in, huh? Five hundred, yeah, right.
Can I just, you know, offhand, what the ALI COA bill is for nine forty-two?
Could you spray a little bit for the ladybugs too? I'm getting a lot of them right now. And why I don't know, but I bet you I've killed ten of them in the last week in my house.
But that maybe be tires or oil or fuel?
Yeah, I'm thinking it would probably be some sort of service on, or tires.
Okay.
That's on.
And I apologize, apparently the, um, the description that Sally normally puts on here got cut off. So, I can email out this sheet with the description on it, just so you guys can see it.
But my other question was, the city of Arcadia got paid four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Sixty-seven.
The what?
City, right here. R twenty-four, twenty-five, oh six.
We paid.
Is that your petty cash or what?
That seems high to petty cash. I don't know.
Okay, well, if you wanna, we'll send that out.
That would be good, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else?
Taking Public Safety Solutions. Is that the hardware or software for the cops?
Software for the police department and municipal court.
Okay, that's fine. I would move to approve the a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two eighty-six point sixty-one.
A second.
Motion made, Doc, seconded by Bob. Roll call please.
Colston?
Yes.
Feltis?
Yep.
Worsni?
Yep.
Bet?
Operator's license, we have none. Picnic permit for Holy Family Winter Wonderland Blast, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Roll call please.
Feltis?
Yes.
Worsni?
Yep.
Bet?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
That's one of their fundraisers.
Future agenda items, start with Doc.
I'm still working on skating rink. Uh, maybe we'll have some snow. We'll have some snow out there, but as far as working on the skating rink, I want Doctor Bill, maybe we bring it up to the council as far as what, uh, what it might cost and, and how to approach this. And so it's a, done properly.
Would that be something that we could involve with the fire department? They could bring a truck down and flood it that way? Is that how they would do it, Bill?
I've talked to Jeff.
Yeah, uh, there's a, a specific method for which you, you need to flood the rink. So, the first thing, the first thing, we need to take a look at how we build a rink and then how we would flood it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We need a plan, that's what we need.
Okay.
Nothing else?
Bob, man?
Uh, let's see. Future meetings, we have regular meeting Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Back at city hall.
Can I add a couple of upcoming meetings here? So, uh, there is an economic development committee meeting next Wednesday. We'll be in this building at five o'clock. Uh, we've invited, uh, Mark Coleman of Weback to Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation to come and have a discussion about the historic preservation district or, or the, the potential of creating one here in Arcadia. Uh, and then secondly, to discuss if we can utilize or take advantage of, uh, what the concept of pop-up shop and, and try to do something with our storefronts, our empty storefronts. And to talk about other economic development strategies. So, that invitation is out there for the public to attend and have that conversation. We'll be sending that agenda out and then also inviting the chamber and their members.
So, do we need to post that in case there's more than four of us here?
We do.
We'll post it as a possible form.
Okay.
And then, uh, we, we talked about it previously, but you know, once we do get that library lease agreement in its final format, we'll bring it to both the, uh, board and the council and, and provide that presentation and go through that contract, uh, or go to, go through that agreement. And then Terry, Terry and I have been working on updating the zoning code in the zoning districts, uh, here in Arcadia. At one, at some point here, we'll have to have a meeting of the whole with the Board of Zoning Appeals, the council and the plan commission to go over those changes before we take that to the public here.
But you'll notify us on that one. But the rest of them is, according to the economic one, Doc's, Doc's the only one that really asked. He's on, on the economic board, so he's the only one who really has to be there, right?
Doc and, and the mayor are on that committee.
Right, right, okay. That's what it said, okay.
Anybody could come, right? And it's gonna be here.
I'll be at this door.
Because there would be a presentation, so.
I'll be at this door, so not necessarily.
Probably be interesting for all of us to show up.
Yeah.
Anything else? Otherwise, all motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call please.
Worsni?
Yes.
Bet?
Yes.
Colston?
Yes.
Feltis?
Yes. Thanks for coming, Chuck.